I don't know my way around this. I mean, I saw the address, but I didn't understand it. I mean.
Which I really like. And I'm looking for it. Can you get us the location? That's not one of them. I think that's three of them. Yeah. I can only drink a little. And I gotta dig and get to my house. This guy comes up. I keep me on me some parrots. There.
Seventy-five minutes.
Well, yes, but for some reason, it's not cool in here.
Yeah, it's supposed to be safe. Yeah, that's good. They'll pull what you want. Regulations. I already said, if you're within five hundred feet of the community. You're five hundred and two feet from. Church, the ministry. Those two feet may come in handy.
Is that all they have in the center? Is that the jurisdiction? It's just the five hundred feet.
If you're within five hundred. Yeah, it's kind of vague as to where you're.
Okay.
Sixty-nine.
Yeah. Um, sure.
He's last on the. Yeah.
I think he was maybe here for these three.
I will.
He might be here for five, six, and seven.
Mm-hmm.
All right, seven o'clock. Welcome to the May tenth meeting for the planning board. Can I get a roll, Viv?
Um, Rob, Mister.
Here.
Adam Murawski. Louis Sella.
Here.
Peter Pennelli.
Here.
Michael Sam.
Here.
Lou, you want to lead the pledge?
Okay.
All the leaders. Stand the flag of the United States of America. Intended Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, did everybody get a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, first item we have to adjourn it for tonight is O'Connor's public house.
Do I speak to the microphone?
Shh. Does he have to? Viv, where's, is there a microphone?
He doesn't have to just speak loudly.
Okay. My name is Bill McGinnis. I'm here representing O'Connor's with Emma Carlson, who's one of the owners. The reason for the application is to memorialize or get final site plan approval, replacing temporary site plan approval for the patio, the existing patio fence behind the establishment. I read the review letter and I'm ready to speak to any of the issues in it. There were, to my, at my reading, there was, I guess, two substantive issues that I wanted to address. And then I'm happy to answer any questions and provide any documentation after the fact. The one, one issue was classifying the fence around the patio as a structure or a building. I'd asked that the, that the board consider the fence to be just a fence, that is, it's on a property line. That's where fences typically go. If we were, if we were asked to respect setback lines for the purpose of the fence, then the patio may, may not be able to stay where it is. The second issue is about parking. And our, our request respectfully would be to consider that the parking load for O'Connor's is complimentary. That is, to say that a lot of the businesses around it have street parking needs during the day and O'Connor's is more typically at night. We don't feel there's parking shortage in the area. If necessary, we can make arrangements for off-street parking for employees or for, or for guests. But we would prefer if the board would consider it as a complimentary parking. There's other, there was other issues or other questions about providing as a bulk zoning table. Happy to do so. Square footage of the restaurant. Everything that's, how the fence is attached to the patio, anything else that's needed that, that you feel is lacking from the application, we're happy to provide after the fact. So, I guess, one point I'd like to make about, about the establishment is I, I have a long history in Pauling. I've lived here and operated a business from here for just under twenty years. I was very involved in Village Green. I designed the bandstand, Jelling Stewart's building, Eastern Hayes Barn. I lived two doors down here for a couple of years and I lived in Pauling for almost twenty, raised my children here. And I put a lot of time into the village. I'm not saying that as a way of saying that I'm entitled to anything. I just want to pass on that I'm doing this for the Carlsons because they're a nice family, they're local, and they're running a local business. And that's what the great thing about Pauling has always been to me, is there's local businesses run by local families. And I'm doing this really in the spirit of the way Charlie Daniels, Daniels used to do, where he was a, a business booster in the village. And that's why I'm here. And I realized that every application is a, is a partnership between the planning board, the village, and the applicant. And whatever it is that you feel is lacking that's germane to, to the patio itself, we're happy to work with you, of course. There's a timing issue where the liquor license is set to expire this month. They've been issuing temporary ones. This was a COVID-measured patio. And it's become a popular, a popular patio for people to sit on. I love it myself. So whatever it comes to tonight, what I'm going to ask is if you support this, if you could support it with something tonight so that the Carlsons can take it to a final liquor license and, and not risk putting their liquor license at, at risk. So any accommodation you can make tonight, if you support this, we, we're happy to come back with any information, anything that we can handle administratively after, we'd ask that you consider doing so. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I guess we'll go through Karen's review first before we open it up to the board.
Okay. So, the first thing was just to consider whether the urban regulations apply. It seems that the improvement would not constitute a twenty percent increase in the assessed value, but the board should come to a conclusion on that subject. As he mentioned, the zoning bulk table is required on the plan sheet for the checklist. And if there's something that you cannot provide, you just need to specify that and request a waiver. So I, I listed here some definitions in the zoning law. An accessory structure, as a permanently anchored structure detached from principal building on the same lot, meeting applicable requirements or the urban regulations. That's the definition of an accessory structure. A building is defined as a structure defined to be used as a place of occupancy, storage, or shelter. The term "building" shall include the term "structure" as well as communication towers and some other things. An accessory use is defined as the use or land, a building or a portion of land or building customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the land or building, located on the same lot with the principal use. And a lot is defined as a parcel of land whose boundaries are established by some legal instrument such as a recorded deed or map, and which is recognized as a separate legal entity for the purposes of transfer of title. Structure unfortunately is not defined in the zoning law. So, I mean, what we have here is an accessory use to the bar/restaurant occurring on a different tax lot. And I'm just trying to sort out where it falls in to the zoning law. I defer to the attorney as to whether the lease is a recognized legal instrument for the purpose of this application. So I, I think that's something that we kind of need to clarify and then move forward. So assuming that the urban regulations do not apply and that this is indeed an accessory structure, then there is a code section in the zoning law called accessory structures. And they be, they may be located in any rear or side yard, provided that they don't exceed fifteen feet in height, that they're setback at least five feet from the, from any lot line. Let's see, what else is written here? That no such building, and remember, building includes structure, shall project near to the street on which the principal building fronts than such principal building. And such building must be permanently anchored in the ground and a permit is needed for any building five by seven. So we just need to sort out whether this needs, you know, an approval as an accessory structure or not. The parking ratios were actually repealed in local law six of 2014. And the planning board is able to determine suitable parking. So, you know, I think we should take into consideration that there's avail, you know, that there is merchant parking, as I understand it. I don't know what the current supply and demand scenario is for that, but we should consider that. I understand that, Lou, don't you work to some?
Have something to do with parking.
You have something to do with parking, so we have a good source of information. And then, you know, we're, we're looking at about, I, I think it's like an eight hundred and fifty square foot patio addition to the existing bar/restaurant. How big is the existing bar/restaurant?
I don't know exactly. I can provide it for you, but I don't have it with me.
Okay. So, you know, I mean, it's not going to be a huge increment of additional patrons, but to the extent there's a existing parking issue, if there is or there isn't, you know, that should be considered. And I just would say that if the planning board does decide that parking is required, obviously the applicant is not, you know, immediately prepared to offer that. But perhaps there is a potential for leasing additional space within the Downey property to provide parking or make other arrangements. The code is pretty stringent as to the distance from the actual use where parking can be provided off-site.
I was looking at that today and I think when they repealed it in 2014 or 2016, that no longer applied to the B1. There is only every other district that that hundred-yard radius was.
Right, well, we would have to clarify that.
Yeah.
So anyway, those are the things I would consider as it pertains to parking. Let's see.
A hundred-foot radius, sorry.
Just wanted to kind of understand how, you know, electricity is going to be connected to the outdoor space, what type of lighting? We could get the manufacturer spec sheets, try to understand, you know, how the light's going to throw it. Because you're, as it's playing right now, I'm right on the property line of a residential property. The survey is from ninety-seven. You know, this is an item on the checklist. If you feel that an updated, updated survey is not needed for one reason or another, then, you know, you could, you can waive that requirement. Like to know how the fence and, I, I don't know if they're going to, if any of this is being set on any sort of platform or anything like that, or is it just straight on the pavement?
Straight onto asphalt.
Then the hours of operation and whether it would be open year-round and how that correlates to the hours of operations for the auto-bobby use. And then finally, detail of the fence.
Would like, we speak to any of those or put up for discussion or question?
Um, I mean, I guess we can go through the site plan, the checklist. Where, where did you feel, Karen, that those still needed to be addressed? There was?
Well, it's a, it's a survey that I, I bring up. It's from ninety-seven. I don't, you know, I mean, they're not constructing anything, you know, they're not actually constructing a, a building or grading or doing anything like that, so.
Right, I have noticed when I went there, I think that back fence, was that existing as part of Downey's? No, because he has a fence that runs along the entire back part of his property.
Right. As far as the survey goes, what's on the sealed engineer's plan is, is exactly what was on the survey from ninety-seven. Now, as far as updating the survey goes, no, there hasn't been one done since then, but the engineer sealed an accurate survey. But, but.
I don't thi, sorry, pardon me, but I don't think an engineer can speak for a surveyor.
Understood, that's what, that's what I'm trying to make, I'm just saying that what's represented in the site plan is exactly what's on the survey from ninety-seven.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
That is, that is good. It should be. It should be what's on the survey.
It isn't always.
But I, you know, maybe we could resolve this with some photographs to just indicate what's there now. Maybe there are fences that have, are new or that are gone, or there's a light pole, or any number of those things that are pertinent, or maybe not pertinent at all, but.
Right.
Maybe just the opportunity to understand what's happening.
Right. Well, that, the, I guess, is two issues. The planning board concerns about aesthetics, design, lights, and whatever information. And it's an easy site visit if anybody wants to go. And then as far as. Do we have to have that governed by building permit in future?
I think with the fence, you know, there's. There's considerations about how far down it goes, you know, like maybe, maybe the planning board would, wouldn't want a gap at the bottom so as to, you know, kind of really shut the space off. I, I, you know.
Yeah, well, there's.
Usually, we almost always typically ask for a fence detail as part of planning board review.
Right. Photographs would be the easiest way for that, or look out the window.
He talked to Graham at the building department today and he's felt that a fence was not like a permanent structure. It was much easier to, to take down a fence and move a fence if you needed to. He didn't really have issue with it being considered like a structure in that sense.
Okay.
Fence. I, I think that actually Kyle can answer some of the questions that we can clarify. I think our, actually, I'd like to let Kyle before we open it up to the rest of the board for some of those other issues.
Yeah, in terms of whether or not the fence is a structure, I think, yeah, you should just defer to your zoning or code enforcement officer on that. They can provide a definition. If it's not permanently affixed as that, that individual defines it, then I think that satisfies the inquiry as, as it pertains to whether or not that can be considered a structure. Well, I don't consider the, the patio or the, which is the subject of the application, as an accessory use because it's not incidental and subordinate to the principal use. It's just simply an extension of the principal use, really. It's not, it's not a, a separate use all in and of itself. The way accessory uses are sort of contemplated, right? Because why are accessory uses permitted? Typically, they're permitted because the use in and of itself would not otherwise be permitted in, in under zoning for some, for some reason. So that's one of the things. But they would be permitted as an accessory use. So it can't be an accessory use for a couple of reasons. One, I don't think it's incidental and subordinate to the principal use. I think it's part of it. It just lacks purportedly walls and a, and a ceiling. But if, if, if they had those and extended out, would that no longer be an accessory but a principle, but for the walls and the ceilings? So I, I think they're serving food, they're serving alcohol in this, in the structure, they're serving it in the building, serving it on the patio. I think it's just an extension of a principal use and that gets around that. Otherwise, there, there would be no way to get around it, right? Because it's not on the same lot as the definition requires, which is ubiquitous in almost all codes in terms of defining accessory uses. And it's certainly not an accessory use to the, to the other principal use of this, on the, on the property where it's located. So in any event, I think you get around it because I don't think it's an accessory use and it's just an extension of the principal use. That answers that question. The lease, it's good for several years. I took a look at it earlier this morning. I don't see any issues in terms of them having the right to occupy, which is what essentially all we're concerned about, is whether they have the right to be on that piece of property. They do, according to the lease, once they have it. You know, they have a possessory interest in the, in that piece of property. So I don't see any issues there. And otherwise, accordingly, you know, in terms of that, I, I think the rest of it's pretty much straightforward site plan review on everything else.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yep.
Do you have any questions for Kyle? Anybody else have any questions?
Well, there is, there is any merchant parking on Broad Street itself, but there is merchant parking along Charles Coleman Boulevard. And I'll agree with Bill that, you know, during the day, the lunch crowds, they don't pose much of a parking problem. And the majority of the parking will take place in the evening. And by that time, you have, you have Charles Coleman Boulevard, you have, you even have Union Street that's, that's very rarely used. So I, I, I think there will be ample parking to, to satisfy the, the additional clientele that are going to be available to the.
Right, I think the one good thing about this is it's been operational for two years. I, I mean, I, so we did this. We actually, right down the road, we did it with the Tap House. And I mean, it was a pretty straightforward, besides it being on the same lot which they own. I mean, that's really the only difference between what you guys are asking for and what he was asking for at the time. We did request that he gives his hours of operation. I mean, I haven't heard, have you guys had any noise complaints in the past couple of years? Do you know if O'Connor's?
Will there be any music outside?
There is, um, there is a speaker out back, but on, so that, for the hour of operation. On Sunday through Wednesday, we're closed by eleven and all the music shuts off. Thursday's midnight and then Friday and Saturday is one AM. And actually, the residents of the building behind are off the main floor at that time and like our patrons, and then they go home when we close. So they, they haven't complained about anything. And they said there, the sound is okay.
All right, there is like a sound ordinance, I mean, it is laid out in our, in our code. I think the hours of operation that we'll, and I don't know if Ben said this or if we set the hours of operation, but we did have him at eleven o'clock every night and twelve PM on Friday and Saturdays. Now, I, I mean, one o'clock's probably getting a little late in the backyard there because there is a residences that you're buttoned up to.
People typically are not back there at that hour of night. They've moved inside. But we can definitely like turn the music off outside at midnight if that's.
Yeah, it's probably, probably a good idea.
Sure.
So I, I just asked that you probably submit that in writing your hours of operation back there, just so they have it on file, so if there's any issues. I guess it's the survey. I mean, do they need to formally request for a waiver if, if they needed to provide the survey for the fence?
I mean, I think they've provided a survey. They haven't provided an updated survey, but it seems like they're asking for a waiver, so.
Do we need to formally just pull the board?
I think that's what you guys have done in the past.
All right.
They're not going any bigger than what they are, correct?
Okay. So the fence is already in place.
Yeah.
But they do have the opportunity to expand in the future under the lease terms. So, you know, you could make that some sort of a condition if you thought it was necessary.
Yeah, I think if you were going for a more permanent structure outside of the fence and that was going to be some kind of wall or something that's going there, then yeah.
That's a new site plan approval, I would think.
They'd have to come back. They'd have to come back for a whole new. Any, any, any extension beyond what you're approving today, they're going to need to come back.
Right.
Because then you're not putting a roof up or anything. It's just, oh, so the elements and that's it. We're applying for what's in place already.
And the parking. Are you guys all right with the survey?
Yeah.
Parking. Yeah, I mean, there hasn't been, has there been an issue, you think, over there with parking up to this point?
No, parking, parking during the day is not an issue on, on Broad Street. I mean, and then in the evening, where, where's going to be a majority of the business, I'm assuming. There's always plenty of overflow on, on Charles Coleman, on Union Street. You can, you can park on Elm Street, you know, there's plenty of parking on Elm Street.
Sure.
I don't think parking is going to be that much of an issue.
All right, just request if it does seem like, if there's another business that opens up down there, that you could, if you have the availability, to at least have some of your staff or something along those like parking.
Yeah, so we actually, our chef and I or whoever's, we have a little driveway that we actually park in, which is not on the, on the road. And the, they're really, a lot of people take taxis to, to the bar and home, so.
I mean, that's why the merchant parking was established to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
So you can have your employees.
Yep.
Park in the merchant area to leave room for your, for your, for your customers. So hopefully, they'll hear to that.
Happy to agree, put in, writing in a letter that the employees will be required to park in merchant parking.
Well, legally, the merchants can't park on the street.
Yeah.
You know, and they have to abide by the three-hour rule.
Yeah.
But, you know, to make it fair to the customers and to anybody else that comes into the villages and to open up the village.
Yeah.
It would be nice if the merchants would actually enforce.
Use it.
Use it.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, when you see an employee parking in front of the front door of the business and then the customers can't park there.
Exactly.
It's, right, defeats the purpose.
Um, as for the detail of the fence, is that more of a, a building department issue or, I mean, aesthetically, I think we've all seen the fence at this point in the past two years. I mean, if, oh, one thing that was brought up in, with the tavern, is there a door on that fence that goes into the, the parking lot of like Downey's?
It's an, yeah, it's an emergency exit there, but then there's another one that goes to, into our property. It's a second emergency exit.
Two gates.
Is there a means of egress out off the patio?
There's two, it's showing, they're showing on the side.
Okay, they are, all right.
What type of material is, is the fence, though?
Wood.
Fence, I know it's wood.
What's cedar?
It's the old stockade fencing.
It's the stockade. Not the pointed, no, but the pointed tops. It's like a rail top and bottom.
I mean, we got through the taverns pretty quickly as far as, you know, moving, moving along the patio. It's been established for a couple of years. We kind of already know if there's any issues or not that we were going to have with it. I'm okay with giving it a conditional approval tonight, but my submission of the, the lighting detail that you, you know, at least explain that and.
Well, we have to make a secret determination.
For this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think it would fall under type two. Kyle agrees with me. It's a, a structure that is, a non-residential structure that is less than four thousand square feet. And that's a type-two action, meaning that it's an action that's not likely to result in significant adverse impacts. So. So you would have to motion and resolve that.
Can I get a motion to get a neg deck on that?
Yes.
It's not a neg deck.
It's not a neg deck?
It's a type two.
You're classifying, it's a motion to classify the action as a type two action.
I'll make a motion to classify this as a type two.
All right.
Second.
In favor?
In favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, and as for conditioning the site plan approval upon lighting, I would like to say at least show us what kind of lighting is out there. The hours of operation. What else?
What are your conditions for hours of operation?
We would just like my 12:00, I believe, on the weekends, on Thursday, Friday, and 11:00 during the weekdays.
So they're closing at 12?
The patio.
The patio.
The patio. I just wanted to be clear.
The patio is closing, what is the time again you said?
12. Fridays and Saturdays at 12:00 for the rest of the week and all.
And the condition on the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The condition on the lighting, you want lighting details, is that precisely what you're looking for?
Yeah, which I believe is already out. There's like string lights out there, I think, right?
We can send in the type of lighting, photometrics, location, photos.
You want the brightness of it, right? You don't want a glaring sodium light out there that you can see 30,000 feet away. You want something toned down.
Basically, the lighting that there is going to stay, yeah, right. You're not going to put spotlights out there tomorrow.
I mean, I would suggest if the manufacturer's spec sheet gives any indication as to the photometrics.
That's what I was going to do, is look, get the cut sheet online for that actual product and submit it with photos.
Might be good to know, like, what if, for instance, they decide to update the fence in the future or add different furniture or make changes to the patio? And they have a five or seven-year lease, I think, is that right?
What's the typical lifespan of a fence like that?
Umbrellas, that sort of thing. I mean, if you care about that, then you should make that known at this point.
Do you have any suggestions as far as...
Not exactly. I'll leave that to Kyle.
Just, well, you could just say if the fence needs to be repaired or replaced, it'll be repaired or replaced with a like, you know, a similar fence to the one that's out there now. It'll, similar, similar, same appearance. Same color, whatever, you know, something like that.
That's fair.
Other than that, I mean, the only other thing I think they have out there are just the tables, the metal tables and chairs. It doesn't seem like there's anything else that needs to be addressed.
Right, and there's not a bar out there, right? There's not going to be serving.
It's table service.
Out there, it's only table service.
The alcohol will be bought out, beverages, excuse me, not alcohol. Beverage will be bought out by a waitress.
By a server, yeah.
Yeah, a server. No, okay.
That's how it's done now.
Yeah, so your fence, it's just, it's a wooden fence now. You keep it wooden with the same design.
That's fine.
All right. Okay, we're going to take a vote to conditionally approve this site plan when those conditions are met. Yeah, I can take a roll on this one.
Lou Musella?
Yes.
Peter Penelli?
Yes.
Mike Marzan?
Yes.
Rob Fister?
Yes.
Okay, and the planning board has waived the public hearing, right?
Did we need to have one for this type of action?
You may have one, you're not required to have one. So that's what the code says, may schedule a public hearing.
Correct. I'd make a motion to waive the public hearing.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I know we said that. Can we leave it open for seven days, just if there is any concerns that residents can write in?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
You're either...
All in or all out?
You're all in or you're all out.
All right.
The document showing the approval tonight hopefully will be sufficient for the renewal of a local license. So it's much appreciated. Thank you very much.
So what you'll do in your, just so the record's clear, the motion was to waive the public hearing and then subsequently the motion is to approve the site plan, the conditional site plan. Just so it's sequential.
All right, thank you, Kyle.
No problems.
We'll submit the, we'll meet the conditions immediately. Thanks very much.
All right.
Good night.
All right, I think that does it for me. I'll be very proud to be one of the colleagues. Do we have Mr. Penilson attending this tonight?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
You bet. Thanks, Kyle. Yep, Lou will give you a call. Okay, good. Yep.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
I'll get that out to you.
Okay, perfect, thanks, appreciate it.
All right, next, we have the Pauling Free Library.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joshua Mackey, Mackey Butzen, Whalen, on behalf of the Public Library here in Pauling, Pauling Free Library. I think the last meeting, you met Brian Avery, who's the director. Probably already know him, the library. We're also accompanied by Ed Hauser. As you know, this is an application for site plan approval of two additions to the library, totaling 800 square feet. I believe the board has determined it's a type two action. There were some follow-up items you asked for from the applicant, which Ed is going to address today as well. Brian's going to have a few words to share with you. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian if there's any questions. Be happy to help.
Okay, yeah. As you know, we're looking to make two additions to the building. The ADA bathrooms on the one side and then the kids' corner on the other. So we, hopefully, you had a chance to review not just the stuff we submitted initially, but also the bulk regulations and the fancy new picture that shows how the brick and the shingles are intended to match the existing. And we're happy to kind of answer questions that you have and address any concerns.
Again, we'll start with, I think Karen's view on iron.
So this project requires a referral under general municipal law 239. Have we done that yet?
No, not for Pauling Free Library.
Okay, so we need to do that. But you don't need to have seeker complete in order to do that referral. So we can make a determination as to that this evening, as I suggested. Just to be clear, we, the board has not declared it a type two action just yet. That was my advice. So let's see. It's been decided that there are regulations apply. And I asked for the bog table, which was provided. There are no variances that are anticipated to be required. Similar to the last project for local law six of 2014, the law repealed the required parking spaces in the zoning law in another place for things in the B1 district, uses in the B1 district. And so again, it's up to the planning board to determine what parking is reasonable. We got Lou's input as it pertained to nighttime use for O'Conners and daytime parking on Broad Street, which this site is on. So we should revisit that subject and see how it applies to this daytime use. They have provided elevations. And let's see, other, they've also provided a bog table that speaks to the coverage requirements in the other part of the zoning regs under Schedule C. We're outside of the DEP watershed, so there's no stormwater pollution prevention plan required. The site plan indicates it's screening and landscaping. And elevations at the corners of the buildings are not applicable. I would just suggest that that's the decision of the planning boards to make. And so you should consider whether you think there is screening that should be required, landscaping, and whether you need to know the elevations at the corners of the buildings. It might be important from a building department's standpoint. A site plan application indicates the provision of a zoning bog table and signature blocks are not applicable, but the applicant has since provided that information. And the survey was certified on May 3rd, 2002. So, you know, maybe consider whether you think the survey needs to be updated or whether you would consider waiving this requirement. And I guess I'll just speak to the type two action. So again, we have a non-residential structure or facility involving less than 4,000 square feet of gross floor area, not involving a change in zoning or a use variance inconsistent with local land use controls. So as far as seeker goes, it could be a type two action, in my opinion.
All right, let's have the board maybe address the survey. How far is the building off the property line on the addition? Do you know offhand that?
Yeah, it's, well, it's on both sides. It's a little over six feet from the closest corner of the addition to the property line on the west side. And it's almost the same on the east side.
Where the bathrooms would be?
Yeah.
That's the WD side? I guess it's up to you guys as far as, I mean, they're not building right on the property line. I mean, I know that B1, it's not like a residential district, it's a little tighter down here. I mean, the survey was done in, what, 2002, the last survey? I personally feel like it, because it's not right on the property line, six feet for the B1 seems like a lot of distance generally. So if you guys are okay with the survey done in 2002, if we don't need an updated survey, we can waive at least that part of this and check that off the list tonight.
Yeah, no problem with that.
No problem.
Any motion for that again?
I don't know, but it doesn't hurt to do it anyway.
Yeah, because then you just cover it. All right, I'll make a motion to waive the survey and just go with the existing survey, six feet off the property line.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Get rid of that one.
So I just want to clarify, until you get the county's review, you cannot approve the site plan.
Sure, sure, we need that referral back from them.
Yep.
I'm going to have Dave weigh in.
It all sounds good. I've reviewed the application. Karen and I spoke about it and I'm in accord with...
All right, so are we determining whether or not we're going to, how we're going to list this for seeker?
Sounds like a good next step.
You get away for the county now, you're dead.
Well, no, seeker you can do. The county doesn't require seeker to be complete. It's just the site plan approval. And, you know, we could try and advance that review, you know, we could petition the county to some, petition is an overly formal way of saying it, but like, you know, you could request, hey, is there any way? It's got to, you know...
Thirty days, right, they have to reply?
They have thirty.
They have thirty, but they could take less, though.
But does it go to the meeting, Dave? Like, does it, in, like, for instance, in Ulster County, it's got to go to the actual Ulster County Planning Commission meeting?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how the county, you know.
Yeah.
They handle it, the staff at the planning department, those are the reasons.
Just in the staff, right? It doesn't go to the commission meeting?
It doesn't go to the committee.
Right, so Viv has a good contact with the county?
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll do it as soon as I get in.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll just see if they can kind of push it along quicker. Okay.
So what is our next step right now, Karen?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, in the interest of trying to advance the agenda of a nonprofit agency and all good things here in Pauling, maybe you want to schedule or consider scheduling another meeting so that, so that, you know, we could advance the application. I guess the unknown here is that we don't know when you'll get the county review back. So I don't know if there's a way...
Why not just find out and then maybe you can pull the board about when they're available?
Yeah, I didn't know if there had to be a special motion or resolution to schedule another meeting.
Yeah, I think we've scheduled special meetings outside of the meeting in the past.
Is it possible to have a conditional approval? Approval conditioned upon the county finding it's a matter of local concern?
I don't know. I don't know if that's possible. That sounds like a legal question to me.
I mean, it's sort of academic, John, I think, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is going to be, yeah.
Yeah, so you still need to do the seeker determination. Did you already do that now?
Yeah, I have not.
So someone would motion that you classify this as a type two action under seeker.
I'll do that. I'll make a motion to classify this as a type two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, what about the public hearing?
Are we not required to have this or we are for the type two?
No, the type two doesn't have anything to do with that. But your zoning law says in any site plan review, you may hold a public hearing. So I think, you know, it was probably good practice, as Kyle suggested in the last one, you all, you motioned and resolved not to waive the public hearing. So you should do that if you're so inclined this time around.
Yeah, I mean, I think we...
I'll make the motion to waive the public hearing.
I think we've got a lot of support from the public.
It's for the community here, that's, you know, we need the library.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I don't think that there is much more we can do here until we hear back from the county or have some anticipation as to when we'll hear back from them.
All right. I guess we'll keep you guys posted as far as when we hear back from the county. Is there any other steps these guys should take in the meantime?
I'm calling you tomorrow.
You can think of, Karen?
I cannot think of anything else at this time.
Is it safe to say then that if the county declares it of local interest that the board will approve it?
We're trying to hold on to our contractor.
One other thing that just, so we have an agreement with the county. What was the criteria? I don't want to be talked about this one. What was the criteria for the 239M?
It's located within 500 feet of County Road and requires site plan approval.
Yeah, it's barely. I measured it and it really depends on where you measure it to.
Yeah, the county, though, has a referral identifier mapping program. And so it...
It triggers it.
Yeah, it was right in there. Yeah, it was right in there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all we can tell you, you can have to wait till we hear from the county with their referral before we can make any kind of decision.
Sounds like we'll be in touch with Vivian, as I often am.
Yeah, we'll be in touch.
So my hearing, so assuming the county, say they get back to you before your next meeting, they would be on the agenda for the, for the June meeting?
Or you would schedule a separate meeting?
We might be able to schedule a special meeting if we hear back from them before then.
Yeah, that would be great, like Ed said, you know, we're concerned about losing the contractor and also the the county funds. We did add the suggestion of you guys or maybe Laurie. We did apply for an extension and so we, they gave us an extension so we wouldn't have to have the the thing built until August, which is better than May, but still very soon. So if, you know, if we are able to do that, that meeting, that would obviously help us.
Tell your contractor to hold on.
We're trying. We've told them that several times, so far they're still holding.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, next, Five Oak Street. Here, take one.
Now you're stuck with me.
Rest of the night, right, for the next three?
Yes.
Why do you say that?
I don't know. So Five Oak Street, so I think we got Karen's letter. I think we weeded through quite a bit of the information from last time and I, as I understand from Viv, we got all our referrals back for lead agency, so hopefully you guys can act as lead agency and get this thing rolling along so we can get to the ZVA, because there's a bunch of variances I know we need to get from the ZVA.
Okay.
So I'll let Karen start.
Okay.
Just go through the.
So have we done the 239M referral? Okay, and we got back, yeah, I don't think I saw what came back from the county. Okay, did you get a copy of this?
I did not, I did say we did get that.
Okay, so we should, we should send a copy to the applicant. Response from the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development is that they have no comments, this is a matter of local concern. So, all right. I, I, yes, I think that the planning board should declare itself lead agency for seeker and schedule a public hearing. I'll continue with my comments, but we'll come back to that. I do also think it's a good time to refer the application to the ZVA. So I asked that the applicant explain how the frontage buildout was calculated, and this is an urban regulation thing. It seemed to me that it was greater than 28.7 percent. Kurt, do you want to speak to that?
I think it's just a matter of interpretation on this and how we want to interpret that. It's kind of a little bit ambiguous because you don't know where Oak Street ends and Ark Street begins on this corner. And there's no defined corner, kind of, it's kinked, it's cut off here. So what we did is we actually just took the building frontage here, which is 38 feet, and applied that towards the entire frontage of the whole thing, and we got the 28 percent. I think Karen's suggestion possibly might be to look at this as two separate, so it would be zero frontage on this road and a greater percentage on this road, so it's however the.
I mean, in either case, they'll need a variance.
Yes.
But it's less of a variance if you consider it by individual streets. And then I just note that, you know, that's kind, in my mind, that's more typical for zoning because like if you have a corner lot, you usually have a front off of each street. And so I think it should be broken into the two street lines.
It's just what does this frontage belong to?
I don't know, you'll have to, you'll have to decide what makes most sense to you. I mean, I, you know, you have a setback, well, I guess we don't have setbacks here because this is the urban regs. I mean, there's a, I guess my interpretation is that it belongs to Oak Street.
Okay, so that's how we'll do it then.
I don't know if the board agrees with.
Yeah, that, that's fine, and that's.
You want, you want to make a tea out of it, you don't want to make a loon go out of order.
No, what, what it is is our, our frontage that we're calculating is this, so it's just a matter of what that.
You want to run straight, like you're saying.
Yeah.
It's just a function of when we apply our percentages. If this belongs to the Oak Street frontage, then that gets added to that, the percentage gets calculated there.
The park, sorry, the parking, that parking space has kind of fallen over that corner. Maybe that's what should tell us, if your parking is, you know, I mean, maybe that should become Ark Street then, that angle, right?
Yeah.
Just to.
That's fine, too, because then actually it gives us a greater percentage over to.
Yeah, okay.
That's a good idea.
So Ark Street gets this piece.
Yeah, because the parking is already.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine.
That's what I said to you, don't you pay attention?
Sorry.
All right, so again, we're back to local law six of 2014, which repealed the zoning laws requirements for parking ratios in the B1 district. So we're right around the corner from Broad Street and.
We're right around the corner from Broad Street. I pay particular attention to Ark Street today.
Yeah.
And the merchant parking area in Ark Street didn't have anybody parking there at all there.
Okay.
It wasn't, so there's, there's.
So there's a good supply.
There's a good supply of parking on Ark Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's.
Yeah, well, I scooted through there this morning, there was nobody on the street.
Do you have a sense of what it's like on the weekend?
On the weekends, the merchants walk there, it's, it can be, it can get kind of congested.
And if they, sorry.
Yeah, not for the most part, there's, there's some spots there.
Okay.
In the merchant area.
In other merchant areas.
In other merchant areas?
Well, like, so on Ark Street, I saw there's, sorry, Arch Street, there's parking on the road that's merchant parking. Is there additional merchant parking areas somewhere else?
There's, there's merchant parking area in the MTA lot that very rarely, very rarely gets used. There's plenty of, there's plenty of merchant parking area in the MTA lot. And there's merchant parking right along Charles Coleman Boulevard.
Uh huh.
On both sides going north and south.
Okay. All right, so now we know what the parking supply situation is like on the weekdays and on the weekends. You know, I think the weekends present the bigger issue just because you have people home and you don't have people. And, and if this was a commercial operation that operated on the weekend.
Yeah, not knowing what that.
Yeah, we don't know what's gonna be there, so we'll, we'll set that aside for now, but that's something that you guys need to think about. So you provided detail on the lighting. It should be, I think it should be specified as a note on the plan that you should use a 3,000 Kelvin option. If you, you talked about potentially wanting to do a gooseneck lighting for a future sign, I mean, think if you're gonna do that, then.
Yeah, I don't, actually, I'm thinking about that, we have this lighting under this canopy.
Yeah.
That's gonna be that, I don't think we're gonna need the light because chances are this business will be open most likely in the light hours and we've got the lights in the canopy, so I don't think we need the gooseneck on any potential signage. If we do, we can come back to the board.
Okay.
It's not a very big area, so I think it'll be lit enough.
Is there light, I'm not necessarily suggesting there should be lighting proposed, but is there lighting proposed by the refuse?
I think what we'll do is we'll submit a detail of a light, like a wall pack with a down shield. Just for, put a little lighting in the refuse area.
Okay. And then I just suggested that the lighting should be dimmed from nine to six, and that would be a note on the plan. So these notes become, they're, they're notes on the plan and then really to dot your i's and cross your t's, it becomes a condition, you know, to the site plan approval. And then we'd like to see the detailed information, architectural information.
Okay. Just to go over that with the board, I think it's the owner's intent is to actually mimic the materials that are on the adjacent building, which is here. So it would be like a warm gray vinyl siding, we'd have brick at the base, and then we'd have a roof color that's the same as that. So that would be our model for the building here. So it would basically look like, right now, as you can see, that's the building that's being removed here, this is the building that is adjacent. So it'll basically feel like it's an extension of that building, since it's so close. I think it might be effective there on that corner to have it look like it's an extension of that building.
So you're making the same color the existing building?
As the new building that was done adjacent, yes. This building's coming down and being replaced by the proposed building.
Something like vinyl siding or?
Yeah, it's the vinyl siding, asphalt shingle roof, and the brick base.
It's a good looking building.
That's a nice looking building. I'll let Karen finish.
So that's what I've got, you know, going back to the beginning here. I think you guys should talk about parking. I think you should declare lead agency for seeker, I think you should schedule a public hearing, and I think you should refer the applicant to the ZVA for variances which are specified as the parking location per the urban regs, the lot coverage per Scheduled C, required minimum setbacks on the front for Arch Street per the urban regulations, required minimum frontage buildout for the urban regulations, and I guess that would be per front. So for Arch and Oak, and then the garden wall.
Okay.
Because that's what those, the urban regs say, that if you can't meet the street, you gotta provide a garden wall.
Right.
So.
So if we need a variance, we can, it's gonna be a site distance issue, so I think there's a good argument why that garden wall would not be necessary here. Plus the parking also takes up that entire frontage.
Right. One concern the engineer had was the turning radius from Oak to Arch for fire apparatuses because you are, I guess, reclaiming some property which is now, now in the street.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because this is the existing.
Right, curb cuts.
Which is.
There now.
So, I mean, I guess we, what we could do, just as long as we protect the end of that car, we could pull this back a little bit here into this area, but we've got to protect the edge.
Right, well, we don't know if the turning radius, maybe it's fine.
Yeah.
But without calculating it, we don't know. And if it, if it does seem like it's an issue, yeah, maybe the curb should be kept down where an apparatus can.
Turning radius of a fire vehicle over this and just move that one way or the other.
What about a run over curb?
Right.
They're doing a circle.
Which might be, as long as it doesn't clip the back of a car there.
Correct, but let's see what that looks like with a turning radius and just overlay it onto this plan and see where it falls.
Right, one other concern he said he had was handicap parking, whether or not it's applicable here.
The thing is, we've got five parking spaces that are for each one of the apartments. If you have one handicap parking space, the chances of that being used, I don't know. Do we want to dedicate one of those spots or use one of the handicap spaces that are out on the street, out on Charles Coleman? It may not be that convenient, but just to have an idle parking space there that may not be used. That's just.
There's a, there's a handicap spot right down Charles Coleman, right on the corner.
All right.
On Broad Street, in Charles Coleman.
And I think the nature of like downtown commercial businesses is that maybe someone will be using several businesses, you know.
You don't know what the occupancy of the building, what the.
Don't know yet, it could be an office, it could be a retail space, we don't know what that is gonna be yet.
But how does that play out, I mean, if the, I'm just curious, from a building code's perspective, like when you go to pull the permits, how does that play out if, if the state code requires you to have the ADA parking space?
Well, I think it would be, it would fall into the municipal parking area. I think a lot of like what's going on with O'Conners, they have no parking. I mean, the handicap person going into that bar would have to park on the street.
Right, but you're providing new parking.
Yes, I think we're providing new parking in a good way.
Right, but so what was the genesis of the engineer's comment? Is he suggesting that it's required or?
He wasn't, he wasn't, he didn't give me a clear answer as to whether or not it's required or not.
Okay.
I think that's the argument, I think, you know, I think we probably could provide a handicap parking space, but is it just gonna sit there? What serves the greater good of the.
What's gonna happen if you do provide one and the apartment's near the parking space, somebody's gonna park there, then they're gonna be getting a ticket or get towed away. And this is what you've got to look at.
Yeah.
Did he say, what, what was, under what statute?
It wasn't village code, it was New York State Code.
Yeah, State. I, I would just suggest that maybe Kurt come in and speak with the building inspector. I just would hate for you to get down the road and then, you know, you got a problem, so let's get it resolved.
Does have some latitude, I think, in terms of interpretation.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, I didn't know what happens next.
But we can address that.
Maybe you can provide the information, you know, and move along.
Yeah, okay.
I, I just have a question, though, about the, so the change of use is what triggers site plan approval, so I'm just kind of wondering, it almost seems like you have to choose before the site plan gets approved, right? Because otherwise, depending on if it's office, that's, you know, you switch it to retail, that's a change of use.
Well, I think we're applying for commercial use, so it could be office or retail.
I don't think, it doesn't work that way, that's, those are separate uses. So I don't, unless it's gonna be the same, you know, if it's the same parking spaces, then, you know, but I, I just, you know, I mean, you'd have to come back anyway for a change of use, I just think you want to pick one, but.
I think that we have five spots that we have to get a zoning for to be able to share them. It's just a matter of, at least my interpretation, do we have to get a zoning, zoning variance for, to use, to share four or three?
No, I don't think we need a variance for the parking, I think what David's getting at is defining, defining whether it's office use or retail use, rather than a blanket commercial use. But that's, that's hard in the downtown, just not knowing what could I, you could get someone that has, wants an office in there.
Well, you know, changing, getting a change of use approval isn't a big deal, but, you know, it's, it's what the code says, you know, so I, I don't, it just would set kind of weird.
Would you like to pick one?
Yeah, flip a coin. I have no tenant in place, obviously, because we know this, this process is a lengthy one. So I, I mean, I, at this point, it would be a complete guess.
You might want to, I mean, I guess the, what would be a more intensive use, you know, so you wouldn't have to commit, because the, under the statute, the, you know, the board can go back and sort of reassess it. If you were, you know, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the requirements are, but I imagine certain uses are more intense than others.
Well, I think in the urban regulations, it's like one space or three spaces per thousand.
They got rid of that, that's what, that's what this law replaced.
Okay, so it took it out of the urban regulations?
Yeah, it's now very, it's all discretionary, so it's just kind of, I mean, I would say that if you could come back with some, you know, I mean, to me, I would think retail.
Yeah, I would, I think it's usually, or retail, I think the way it's written is one per 300, office is one per 400. So I'd say we'd want to call it retail for now.
Right, right.
And then if, you know, you couldn't rent it to a retail tenant and an office wanted to occupy it, then it's a lesser.
Right. That's what I, that was my point.
Okay, so I think we'll call it retail then, now? Circuited way to get there, I guess.
And just a quick question, that one per 300, Dave, you said that no longer is in effect? I thought that was only the type two situation.
Oh, when they, when they amended the law, they took that out, they just amended, they eliminated that whole section.
Oh, so that on the bulk table no longer applies?
Well, it's not in the bulk, it's in the, it's in the zoning law itself.
And it's also in the urban regulations on that page, I think.
So, so you need a variance for the parking location?
Right, that's.
We thought at one time that you needed a variance for the number of parking spaces, but local law six of 2014 repealed the parking ratios in the zoning law that pertained to the B1 district. So it says one per whatever square feet, but it doesn't matter anymore.
That's out.
Yeah.
But I think for the board's deliberation.
We still have to.
Five apartments and retail space on the first floor.
Right, we have to still set a reasonable amount of parking for the building, you know. I mean, that's still a good, because people living there, each one is.
I mean, that's still a good, cause people living there, each one is probably gonna at least have one car. You have a couple living there, they're gonna have two.
But maybe not, it would be ideal if you could take the trade and do what you wanna do, but.
That would be great, and then for the parking in the village, but I mean, we still have to set a reasonable amount, which we can say is probably one per apartment.
Yeah.
And then we still have to figure you're gonna need some parking and employees at the, at the commercial space, which. Right, now, do they actually have to prove that you've purchased merchant parking for that? To us?
Merchant parking isn't purchased, it's just a matter of getting a permit from the village, right?
Get your, uh, permit, that's it.
Get that from the village clerk.
And I assume as a landlord, you would probably wanna assign each one of those individual spaces to each apartment and that's all that can park in there, everything.
It's customary in a lease that you, that you write in there that each apartment designated one spot per the apartment. Any other space is, they need to find elsewhere. Down on other properties in the village that have to tenants rent spaces from other landlords with bigger parking lots. It's very common and normal.
Sure.
I mean, on the weekends, you could make it a condition that the merchants park in merchant parking. That way you don't have an issue with the residents not finding parking.
Right. Well, yeah, that's the kind of, that's gonna be provided to them, like, yeah, his residents don't wanna come home and find that whoever, the guy working downstairs is parking in their spot.
How, how big is the commercial space again, a thousand?
Yeah, I think it's.
Thousand square.
Yeah, thousand.
A thousand square feet.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
It's like three parking spaces.
Like at, at most, it's three employees and, and, you know, if it's a retail establishment, that's highly unlikely. It's most likely it would be like one person working all day.
Right, I would think, yes. So, I think it's.
I mean, if it was an office, maybe you're gonna break that into, you know, two or three desks, maybe you have more parking because of that, but we chose retail, so.
Just for the record, I have no problem making a condition that any tenant, the, the employees or the tenant themselves must park in merchant parking. That's not a problem at all. I can very easily put that in a lease that the commercial side of it, whether it's the owner of the store or the employee of the store can't park in those five spaces, they must park in merchant parking. That's not an issue at all. Again, it's only really because the merchant parking is literally twenty feet across the street. It couldn't get closer if it was on top of the building.
All right. So they wouldn't really need a variance for parking in a, in the sense for that, but I mean, they still need it for the location of the parking.
Yes, they need lots of variances.
No, I know, I know.
But not for the number of parking spaces.
Right. All right.
So I, I guess.
Davey, you have anything else to add?
No. Before we move along.
I, I mean, I think you should resolve, if you're ready, the parking and, and put that behind you so that you can move on.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good thing, not only for you, as a tenant, but also for the residents that you do. That parking would only be for the residents of the building. If you're able to.
So maybe you make a note on the site plan and then that note gets brought into the conditional.
The residents of the apartments but shared for the, the commercial customers, so to speak. Is that what you mean? Like, let's make up any name, if it's a sneaker store and you were going in to buy sneakers, as a customer of the sneaker store, you have to go in and park there. That's okay, it's the employee of the sneaker store that can't park there.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have to, I guess you're not gonna be opening it all hours at night, there's just no on-street parking. So I mean, if they are living there and they need to park their car off-street, like, it's gonna have to be in one of those five spots.
Yeah, that's no problem.
I don't know if we run back into that issue of, let's say it's a Sunday, your tenant runs out and comes back and just.
I mean, like I said, in my other buildings, it, it happens all the time and tenants understand that's apartment living in the village. You know, that's, it happens. Parking everywhere is relatively tight, so you have a spot, but sometimes there's another customer in it and.
Sunday's not gonna be an issue.
Yeah, Sunday is definitely.
We wish it was an issue, right?
Yeah, yeah, Sunday's not an issue.
Sunday is not an issue at all.
So what's your suggestion as far as designating the parking again?
I, I think you should make it a condition that merchants park in merchant parking.
All right.
I think that during the week, you have the shared parking scenario in that, you know, people that live there leave and go to work and people that work there come and park. On the weekend, you know, again, it's a, it's a, if it's a retail establishment, you know, and you have, I mean, how many people are you gonna have in there at one time? Maybe two, maybe three, and probably most of these people are walking around the village and shopping.
I agree.
So, you know, it's, it's very unlikely that like a destination retail where it's like they're only going to that one place. I feel, I feel, I feel comfortable with it, given the size of the space, it's only a thousand square feet. I mean, I just, I don't know how much trouble they can get into.
Well, you also have the ability to revisit it. The law provides for you, if it turns out that there's.
Yes.
Hundreds of people coming, you know, you can take it and look.
Yeah, at any point, it is written in that, you know.
So it gives you a little comfort that you're not, you know.
There was one question I had in the prior one was as far as the entry, the shared entry between the commercial space and the residential space.
Arm it on the back, bottom floor.
We can block that off so it doesn't interject with each other on the inside of the building.
I think the original reason for that is that the basement is a mechanical room, storage room and laundry and that's open to anyone in the building. So that was really the original intent on that. That shared hallway is a hallway, obviously, majority, ninety-five percent of the people walking through there are just for the apartments. But I think the original door, that was the reason behind it, is there's that stairwell that goes into the basement for storage, mechanical and laundry.
Right. Part of that special use permit separating the apartment to the rear in the B one, I think kinda adds, lends some precedent as far as not having that shared space between commercial and residential, even though it is permitted in the rear of the building's in the B one, like the.
Yeah, it's not a problem on my end at all, that's no prob, I just wanna explain why that was even.
We've got two other exterior doors, we can close that door off.
Sure, did you ever reach out to the people across the way, four Oak Street, about that little parking lot that they have to the, to the, to the right of Chamberlain's?
To the right of, oh, Rocco's building?
Yeah.
It's, he owns, he owns basically from the white, he owns the four buildings in a row, he owns all of them. He does rent, I think two of my other tenants do rent pick spaces from him.
Okay.
He signs year leases with them. So, I mean, he has more parking than he needs in the.
In the, in the event that you might need some parking, you think he'd let you?
I've talked to him many times, so all he requires is whoever's gonna rent there provides a copy of the registration, a copy of insurance and sign the year lease, your parking lease. And yeah, he has spaces for lease all the time. Again, I only know that because two of my tenants already rent from him.
So what's our resolution with the parking here?
Does, does anybody else, I maybe ask the rest of you board what they think?
Is the five adequate, you feel like, for that? And the merchants park in the merchant, they share parking with the commercial space?
Signage of some sort to, to let people know parking was restricted somehow, would that help at all? I mean, just.
Yeah, I'm sure we can, for residents and customers only or something, to that effect, yeah, I'm sure we can work on a, some sort of signage there. But I mean, again, as Sean said, you know, the merchants will know, you know, that they cannot park there at certain times, so, you know, or they cannot park there. It's just tenant and customer only and we can define times on that.
Well, all the time, tenant and customer only, period.
Right.
That's about all you could do, cause you, unless you're gonna, you got no parking. You're gonna have apartments, they're gonna, I know if I'm renting an apartment, I wanna have a parking space.
Sure.
It's very simple. Well, I tell you what, this is, this is probably one of the few, a few sites in the village where the landlord is actually providing parking. Parking, you're right, cause I know most of the people around here are gonna go looking for parking, I know that. I mean, nine out of ten of them don't even mention parking. And then all of a sudden, the tenant says, well, okay, where can I park? Well, that's, you know, that's up to you to find out. At least he's getting a.
He's helping.
He's helping him out. We gotta, we gotta be a little flexible here, you know.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is the B one doesn't really want parking in the front of the building too. That's why we have a parking situation, cause there's no room for anybody parking in the rear of the building.
Right, exactly.
So I mean, it's all gotta be, off-street parking somewhere has gotta be provided for residents. Yeah, I mean, it'll be up to basically the zoning board at, at this point. It's just a matter of how many parking spaces we really feel like they need to provide. Now, whether you guys think it's a good idea or not to share the commercial with the residential spaces. That's what it boils down to. Polling guys, how do you feel?
I'm fine with it, yeah, I'm fine with it. I think we should, we should get this project going and let's give it a sample approval. You're gonna, you're gonna have to do it, yeah, let's get the project going.
You're good with the five shared spaces?
Okay, so the next thing you need to do is declare yourselves lead agency for seeker.
I need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for that, I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think you should schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, let's do that for our next meeting. Get a motion to, uh, schedule a public hearing for which meeting, what's our next meeting date, Vivian?
June fourteenth.
I'll make the motion.
Second, all favor? All right, June fourteenth.
And then refer to the ZBA, refer the applicant to the ZBA with the, with the variances that are listed.
All right.
Just, just that, the minimum frontage build out per street. So I think the way the meetings are set up, the application to the zoning board is like due tomorrow. Hey, we, we tried to arrange the meetings to make, to make it work, you got a day now. So, you know, that's better than what you have before.
All right, then.
Kurt's got nothing else going on, so it's no big deal.
I'm gonna need you, your signature on a lot of things.
You gonna be in his office all day, y'all might as well bring him coffee in the morning, that's it.
All right, tomorrow.
Right, we have the, was that a motion? Have referred the ZBA or no?
Is that a motion or?
Yeah.
Yeah, make a motion, yeah.
I'll make him, I'll make the ZBA. I'll second it.
To refer, right, the variance.
The applicant.
Advocate to the ZBA.
The variance is listed.
All favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Kurt, if, if all goes well with the ZBA, what's the next meeting prognosis?
Well, I think the, the ZBA meeting is after the next meeting of this board, correct?
No, cause they changed their, their submission, it's not a month anymore, it's two weeks, right?
Two weeks.
So you should be able to get on the last, select the last Wednesday of the month if you make the submission tomorrow.
Yes, which is May twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So then you would come back to the, what we just said, the June fourteenth meeting.
Okay.
And you, you would have been to the ZBA once, but you may, you wouldn't necessarily have the ZB, you wouldn't have the ZBA approval cause we won't be able to do the secret determination.
Correct, that's what, that's what I'm thinking of. So you can't do your seeker until the next meeting of the planning board. We can't do a ZBA determination till we get there, so we'll be in the June meeting anyway.
I'll see you guys in October.
So.
Yeah, can you just overlay the, what a fire apparatus we do around that corner, just so we know what the curb cut would have to be?
They can't make that corner, they're not gonna make the corner come in from the post office, so.
Right, I mean, they're basically the same geometry, so.
They don't have a till, so they ain't gonna make it, so they gotta figure it a little better.
All right, is that fit for five Oak through tonight? Let's skip ahead to get Phil Brand out of here. Instead of polling commons, let's, let's do, uh, twenty-one West Main.
So this is a new application, twenty-one West Main Street, currently known as Fountain Plumbing and Heating. So it's a two and a half story commercial building in the B one zone. It's on the south west corner of the intersection of West Main Street and Fletcher Avenue. So what we're proposing there, it's a, it's a two and a half story commercial building. So we're proposing to keep the first story of that building as commercial use and entry to the apartments above. So there'd be three apartments on the one and a half stories above the commercial space on the first floor. So there'd be three apartments in this building, which is currently all commercial. So it's change of use of the upper floors on that building. The lower level on the building would be one or two commercial spaces, again, on the entry. So just for clarification, the existing entry into here, into the fountain plumbing building here would remain. There's a oval window here, this would be the entry, the common space to get out to the apartments above. And then there's this double window here, turned into a door to get into the other commercial space on the first floor of this building. Really no major change to the site, it's existing. We have parking along West Main Street. We're providing, again, we have three apartments and the commercial space. We're providing a total of eight parking spaces within the existing parking area. That's basically it in a nutshell, what we're proposing for the site.
There's no change to the footprint for the, the shell of the building?
The only thing would be the two potential entries that look like this to cover the two other doors.
And paint.
Okay, we'll, we'll paint on the building.
Colors of serious things.
Can you speak to the protrusion of the, it's a roof, it's just like, what is it?
Is this what?
Yeah, we have this existing, so it'd be.
Oh, it's matching that.
Mimic that in two other spots for the doors.
Did you ever see the original drawings for this place?
Totally different. I did. I think Bill McGinnis did those.
How many spots do you have for parking here?
Eight, total.
Eight?
Mm-hmm.
And you put a handicap spot in?
Yeah, there is a handicap spot here. There is one existing.
Are you repaving or are you just restriping, are you?
It's pretty much striped existing.
Oh, so you're doing nothing to the parking?
Yeah.
It is what it is, it's current and proposed.
Yeah. I think what we might do here is just in this area, in between the parking and the face of the building, just make that a sidewalk that you can walk on to get into the.
It's already, it's already concrete pavement, right?
Correct.
What's happening to the west side of the building, where that little storage area is now, that?
Over in here?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll keep it fenced, then we'll put the refuse in here and the cans in here and just leave it as outdoor storage. I mean, I don't know if it'll be necessary to have it as outdoor storage or not.
Are you gonna put another pattern of fencing over here to maybe complete the, uh, five different types of fencing that are on the back of this?
I'm sure we'll, I'm sure Sean will repair this so that we.
Do you even know there's five different types of fencing on that?
Well, it looks like there's some pieces missing and.
About a three.
I have news to make, I didn't even pay attention in the back, yeah.
So the, the refuse area isn't currently fenced?
Yes, uh, this is an outdoor storage area that is fenced now. So we'll just use that and put the cans inside there, pull them out to the curb if necessary.
One thing that wasn't filed for this, it does have listed as, where is it? There was an approval given when this action was taken, I think you had it listed in the seeker. There was a CL given in two thousand and five and then they determined that site plan was needed, so they went back and did site plan. And then site plan was never closed because they said there was still continuing, continuing work on the place forever. Like, even up until two thousand and eleven, they said they were still continuing the work and they kept filing for extensions. Didn't look like that it was ever closed out by the building department. Maybe if you can just follow up with them, just see the status of it, where that was. I know one thing was a sign that they were talking about, which obviously, you know, he redid the sign. Another one was something else, I think it was black topping or putting concrete around the perimeter of the building on both sides.
I'm just thinking out loud, but wouldn't you guys be able, you could just. I'm just thinking out loud, but w- wouldn't you guys be able, you could just, this new site plan, I think, could trump.
At least.
You know, you just kind of wire it clean and not worry about the path. I mean, right, it's probably less complicated. But then you're, you're just calling the shots. I mean, if you want, whatever those conditions are, you could order them too, you know, or not, depending on what you think.
Alright. Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that. I, 'cause it seemed like they were mostly done. It was just no record as to whatever transposed.
Yeah, if we can close the loop on that.
Yeah, there was.
Would this board have to be correct?
Yeah, I didn't know if the CO was still left open because of that. Like, I just wanted to make sure everything was in place before, uh, we went too much farther. Making sure that it wasn't like an open permit on the place, basically, because of that.
Sean, do you go do anything to the stone on the part of me there?
The, the only change, uh, on the building or on the wall?
On the building.
So the, the only real change to the exterior of the building, like Kurt already said, was there's two existing windows. One's an oval, one's a double. They're gonna be removed, so we're gonna have to cut the stones or put in a door, basic, doors, basically. Um, but no, the rest of the stone facade.
It's gonna stay the same.
Stay just how it is. I think we, ideally, when we cut the doorway, we may have to, we're gonna reuse pieces that come off to kind of fill in, to put it back, so I don't want to have anything stick out that looks different. So I don't want to have to buy new stone to put in, match with the old stone. It'll never match. So we're gonna try to reuse what's there, um, but ideally, no, there wouldn't be any change. The stone will stay the same. We're proposing to just repaint the stucco, and the trim is, needs repainting, so the trim would be white. The stucco probably be me- medium gray, and, uh, and that's it. The wall in the, where currently faces Zarecki's office, that wall on, was at Dutcher Avenue, that would stay exactly the same. Uh, the stone wall that wraps around the whole building, uh, in between the church and there, that stays exactly the same. Um, the, where they currently have a fountain plumbing sign is probably, we would just replace that with a new sign. Uh, but it would stay exactly the same. It would be the same essential size, the same lighting, all that is existing will stay existing. Because it's just for the sake of plumbing anymore.
Is there a reason why there's only two dormers up there? Like, what's in the attic at that place?
There's one, it's a, it's currently finished base. I believe on, from one of my research in the building department, it's listed as finished storage space. There's currently sprinklers there. There's currently a small kitchenette there. There's a full bathroom there. It's heated and cooled.
Um, where the options? You're talking about where the options of the dormer is?
Yeah, for, for that whole top floor.
The whole, the whole.
The whole top floor. The whole top floor is one giant open room minus the bathroom.
There's a big dormer on the south side of the building, facing the church. Big shed dormer.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I, I don't know why it's two, not three. I don't know.
I mean, it showed it on the original drawing. It was done for the place, but the only reason that it looked like he had left that dorm room up there was because he made that entry so much bigger that it like, it proportioned it like, it, it just weren't, made sense.
Upstairs, no, there's nothing that prevents that. You know, that's just the way they built it.
Right. It's weird. Looks weird.
Um, yeah.
It does. You gonna put another dormer up there to balance it out, or?
I don't think that's the plan to do that.
No, the plan is not really to affect, you know, the ma- um, make major changes to the exterior like that, especially if they're not needed for what we, what we're trying to do for the building. The, the, currently, we don't, we don't own the building. The lift ones still do. The whole deal of purchasing is, um, contingent upon planning board approval of getting this change of use for that space. And, um, you know, a clear title, which would take care of open COs that may be in the building department. They'll have to get that taken care of with the building department before we can ever get to the closing table, so.
Right, that's why I mentioned it, because.
Right, yeah, for sure.
That's something that the building department ended up bringing up. It's.
Yeah, no, no, no doubt.
Um, do you have anything else?
Do you want me to go through my letter?
Yeah, please.
Sorry.
That's okay. Um. So I, I think we need to determine if the urban regulations apply here. They're proposing minor changes to the front facade. If it does apply, then area var- area variances related to the changes made to the front facade may apply, such as the zero setback required and minimum building frontage build out.
I'm thinking that, you know, we're not doing that much change to the building physically, just internally. So I would think that the urban reg- regulations would not apply to this, and we're not changing the site.
So I think it boils down to the twenty percent increase.
I don't think it's, I mean, eh, enlargement, extension, reconstruction, I, I don't think this fits in any of those. It's not an extent, I mean, there's a little thing that's, that's not, that's like a, the intent of it was, if you're doing something that's gonna affect the exterior visual aspects of it, then, you know, the, the twenty percent was, when you're doing these, you're doing one of these things, you're enlarging, extending or reconstructing, and, you know, and then, then it still has to meet the twenty percent threshold. So, uh, I, I don't, it certainly wasn't the intent of the law to make somebody do, you know, when they're only doing stuff inside. You know, it's kind of, it's supposed, it's a visual thing.
And I would think that the value would be under twenty percent anyway of the total value of the building, so. I would, I, just as an extra to that.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I just want it to be clear.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the urban regulations don't apply, so you don't need to update your bulk table. Um, I had a few comments on the environmental review, um, to indicate three apartments, a multiple family. Um, indicate the proposed hours of the commercial uses, describe the proposed commercial use. Um, you know, again, it could be, is it?
I think it's, I mean, I, I guess we could say like eight AM to eight PM, just not knowing what the commercial use might be in there. We can assume it'll be retail space, um, again.
You have to make some assumptions, right?
Yeah, we have to, just.
One part of the, the major part of the commercial use, the larger section of the commercial use, we're gonna use for our own construction business. It's gonna be kind of like a design center, um, and an office space for us. Um, so that potentially, it's gonna be me and one client in there going over, you know, designs, interior designs and stuff like that. So, very little traffic.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not gonna be a restaurant. It's not gonna be a bar. It's not gonna be anything like that.
Construction yard. I saw, also in the file, there's a lot of complaints, 'cause, uh, fountain was storing a lot of just junk on the side of the building.
Yeah, there currently still is. Yeah, well, that's, none of that is gonna be there. Um, and the other side, the, the proposed that Kurt drove on the first floor, um, is gonna be an office space. No question about it. It's gonna be office space. We may even, depending on how the layout goes, when, once we actually get in there and build out, it may just be one big office space for us, but we may separate it if it's big enough to make two. That's why Kurt had proposed it as a potential of two, um, and I just want the board to be aware.
You can connect it on the back, under the stairs or.
Alright. I just want the board to be aware, the majority of this building is already finished. Uh, so the second floor, half, all of it is already sheet rocked, finished, sprinklers, lights, air conditioning, heat, everything. We're just changing the use of it, basically, so we're not even, we're, we're making tweaks to it. Obviously, we had to add, we have to add a bathroom, but, so it is already a finished base.
Okay, um, you had selected yes for noise. Was that an accident?
Yes.
Okay. Um, describe the proximity to the nearest residential structure and the type of lighting.
Yeah, I think that that building to the west is about forty-five feet away. It's a three-family residence over there. I mean, we have, and the lighting is existing on the building, plus we have the fence along that side as well, on the stone wall.
But you'll be putting lighting, I presume, underneath the new canopies?
Yeah, that'll be just the recessed light to match the existing setup.
There's already existing light under the.
Right, so we just mimic that. Just have a single light underneath, so it really won't shine anywhere.
Okay, I think because it's recessed and it's a can, it goes straight down. We don't, I would suggest we do not need.
Nice photometric plan for that.
Yeah. Um, I don't know what E three B was, but you should provide the answer.
Yeah.
Um, the survey is dated two thousand and eight. Uh, the board should consider whether it should be updated or if the requirement should be waived. As, um, Kurt explained, the only thing they are potentially adding is a, uh, sidewalk on top of the already paved area.
That's right in the, that's right in the middle of the site, so.
Are you, are you proposing additional fencing?
No, we have fencing that goes along the two sides. Here we have the stone wall here, so there's no additional fencing.
Um, you didn't estimate your value of new construction in the site plan application, so that is something that's required. Um, I did say provide a spec sheet for the proposed lighting fixture, but now that we know it's underneath the canopy, I think.
It'll be very similar to what we talked about on Five Oak.
Yeah.
So we can use that as a model.
Yes. Um, if there's a light proposed for the new wall sign, you should provide a spec sheet for that.
Okay, yeah, I don't think there's gonna be any need for that.
It's totally existing. We're not changing it at all.
Right.
Um, detailed architectural information, you know, should be provided as, as the board likes for the, what do you call that?
Yeah, I mean, it's just the gable entry structure.
The gable entry structure.
And it'll just match.
They told you it's gonna match, so I don't, you know, maybe if, if, for instance, that's, that's important to you, that might become a condition to the approval, right? You know?
Yeah, please list it on there, whatever it is, whatever it's made out of.
Yeah, fine. And we can provide a paint chip for whatever color you're gonna propose for the building.
Um, the, the project does need the referral to the county, 'cause it's within five hundred feet of the county road. Um, it doesn't need a special permit approval. That was a mistake on my part, leftover from something. Um, I, you should consider declaring intent to be lead agency for seeker. I said, so I said upon receipt of an updated application. Okay, so I think I want to ensure that we knew yes or no on the urban regs. So it's a no, and so we don't need, you know, we're not changing the zoning on it, you know, so to speak, on the bulk table. So I, I am comfortable with the idea of declaring intent to be lead agency, because the factual information is correct.
Okay. Can I make that motion?
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Um, and then if you want to hold a public hearing, I would go ahead and schedule that.
Now?
Yes.
Sure. What's, uh, for the same, same meeting in June, what'd you say, twelve, fourteen? I already forgot.
Four, it's June fourteenth.
June fourteenth.
Do we make a motion to waive, uh, the, the survey as well at this point?
Sure.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Either of them?
All fair.
Aye.
So I guess if we can, like, Five Oak, if we can make those minor revisions to the EAF and get those to Viv tomorrow, if she can send those out to the, for the, um.
For the referral?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, that would be best.
If we can do that, just to keep that rolling.
Yep.
Alright, I think it's just a couple items. I think we've done it already for your comment letter.
We already got the referral for Five Oak, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, no, last time, we were at the meeting last night, there was a couple minor changes in EAF, which we made the next day, so Viv could send it out. So we, similar to that, if we could.
Um, I don't have anything further.
Dave, you have any concerns? Is anybody else? Just see you next month.
Okay, great.
Done yet, relax.
Are we, we're on that one, right?
That one?
That one.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, everybody. Lunchtime?
Yeah, put everything together.
You gonna be up all night?
I'll, I'll catch that.
Thank you, Austin. Talk to you in the morning. Have a good night.
Night.
Last but not least, seventy-one, East Main.
Yes, hi. Um, okay. So, as we all know, this is the building that was approved by the planning board for seventy-one at East Main Street. Essentially, this was brick base to match the existing commercial building. It was a stucco EIFs, um, finish on the upper two stories on that building, uh, that's similar to the commercial. Dark roof, like the commercial, asphalt shingles, and then we have this porcelain tile element here, which is similar to the commercial building. Further refinement of this building as we've kind of really gotten dug into the building. Uh, we, this was basically made for the elevator and the stairs right here. So this is kind of the circulation tower. We've actually pushed the elevator and the stairs into the interior of the building. So it eliminates kind of that need for that.
For what, a masonry? There was gonna be masonry around the?
It would, yeah, it was gonna be masonry and then it's gonna have that porcelain tile over top of it.
Right.
So what we're proposing is actually to modify the materials. Keep the brick on the base, keep the roof asphalt shingle tile here, and modify the material on the upper stories here to be hardy board siding. You know, white clapboard orientation on these elements, and just in the central portion of the north and south would be a vertical board and batten in the same color.
I see you didn't list that on here, on the drawing. It didn't just have the board and batten.
Vertical board and batten. It's the same, same material. It's, it's actually.
Well, that's horizontal.
Yep.
This is vertical.
Right, so, and actually, this drawing here, I just, I did modify that to point to the vertical as well as the horizontal side. But it's the same material, it's just the orientation of how it's set up, basically.
It's clapboard?
Yeah, the horizontal is clapboard.
Yeah, this would be clapboard, right?
That's clapboard, and then this is vertical board and batten siding, but it's the same material.
Oh, right, 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 right. Alright, um, I think.
Oh, don't.
This had a prior architectural review of this project, if I understand correctly.
Yes.
Correct. I mean, I have a tough time going over an architectural review said, it, I'm not saying I don't like it. I, I, I wanna say it's probably an improvement for what it is, but I'm not, I'm really not comfortable going over an architect's head as far as the full scope of this project and not having him way back in on this.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, he, he was brought on to look at the proposed building we were doing. At that time, it was, it's just the material, basically, on this. Our intent was, this is more of a residential building.
It makes a big difference. Some of, we've been finding that out most recently, how important it is, what we're putting on, what's going on the outside of these buildings.
Alright, so what do we need to do?
I'd like to have him come back in and at least look at it and say whether or not this is gonna work in his grand scheme of things. And the rear building, how is it gonna tie into the rear building? 'Cause now you have, you have the plaza that's there, and it's been done this way with, with those materials, and now you shifted gears to these materials now. I mean, I know the brick on the bottom's gonna stay the same and kind of, it ties those two in.
And the color's the same.
Right, which helps. And then the rear building, what was that gonna be? Always clapboard back there?
No, the rear building, all three buildings originally were gonna be the, the stucco finish.
Is the rear building still gonna be stucco? Is that?
It, maybe. I think we'd have to come back before you at that point where you get that developed. But I, I would say at the point now, as it was approved with the stucco finish, yes.
'Cause the rear building you're supposed to tear down and rebuild.
Correct.
Well, I'm glad you're starting early with this, that's.
We're trying, we're trying to do it right.
So the, the board has designated an architect. I mean, are you thinking about another one or, or just using the same?
I don't know if we should use this.
JP did the.
JP did the review on this?
Correct.
But, but then that's gonna have to go back to the board, you know, I mean, I.
I know, we were.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have compete, you got a guy who's gonna be looking at, you know, community character and everything else to have, it's gonna be duplicating, I think. That's, you know, it's just, you've already got somebody queued up.
Yeah, I mean, if he's available, like, I'd rather.
Otherwise, you're going through a.
Which one, which one you talking about, Ora?
Robert Orr.
Oh, you, you're Robert Orr?
Yeah, he's, you know, he was, he's, yeah, he's the one that the board designated, so.
Right.
But wouldn't that potentially interject a new voice into the, I mean?
Well, it's a new, it's a new look. I mean, it's, you know, it's, he's do, he's already doing it on the, at the end of the street, and he can look at the building and say, you know, this fits in or it doesn't, you know?
We can't have the same person do the review?
That's what we're saying. That's what I'm saying.
No, what do you mean, the same person who looked at this the first time?
The original review.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you're gonna have to go back to the board. The board, the trustees has to designate the, the architect.
Right.
Under local laws, so you're gonna, and then that's gonna be a discussion among the board. I mean, I don't think there'd be any, I mean, this, this guy is, he was, he was designated by Andreas Dewani, who was the guy that did the master plan. And I, I think they're quite colla- who was the guy that did the master plan, and I, I think they're quite collaborative in terms of, I think they work together, or, you know, I mean, know each other well, and, and, um, he seems to have a pretty good handle on the village and the kind of the community character, and, and, you know, he knows the master plan, so. Because that all should be, that should be a big part, is you're gonna be duplicating that. You're gonna have to, if he did, if that guy didn't do it the first time, he should have. And so you're gonna have somebody who's actually doing their homework, and, so.
I, I make a motion that we're gonna use it, but Mr. Orr.
Well, yeah, we have to, we're gonna refer it to the board to.
No, they were, no, they were.
He's already, he's already on.
He's already, yeah, he's already appointed, yeah. Are we limiting the review just to the material changes, too? I don't want to just open up a whole can of worms and just start all over again.
The whole site plan, but I, I mean, I would like, I'll just speak, Karen.
I mean, I, I think we should just be very clear about what's in play here, so. So on the application, there's an option for an architectural approval. I know that you and I spoke, and you felt this was an amended site plan. Is there, I'm just curious, is there the possibility of an architectural approval? What is that? Does it exist?
There's a statute that allows for an architectural review, the planning board can request it.
Uh-huh, but that would be in addition, so they, they could not just come in for an architectural approval.
No.
This would not fall into that category.
It's a planning board's purview to under, it's a two thousand and nine local law to be able to, um, so.
Okay, so.
And, and in terms of, but to answer your, I mean, in terms of the scope, I mean, that's not, that, that's really, I think you should just let the architect, I mean, what, what they're gonna recommend, that's up to them. I mean, but it, you know, I, I hear what Kurt, I hear what you're saying, I mean, it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've been going at this for years now.
I mean, it, but we just want to hear what the guy recommends, you know, and then really do that, take it in mind.
I think I'm just, you've mentioned community character a few times, so in terms of Seeker, like, you know, if you're asking him to weigh in on Seeker, then we should be explicit about that. He, Kurt, I'm just trying to clarify this, because Kurt just said, is he, is it just to the, the materials?
Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't know, I'm not talking about Seeker, I, I, I'm just saying that, you know, the whole, you know, the master plan has got repeated references to, you know, the materials, and the colors, and the visual, and the aesthetics, all kind of fitting in with the existing, you know, the existing neighborhood, the existing other buildings throughout, you know, I'm, I'm not a design guy, so I don't, but it, but I understand what the intent is, and it's, it's, you know, to have somebody look at those aspects, and, you know, so.
It's mainly because this has already had an architectural review, like.
Yeah, one of the, only one.
I know, and.
Burd ar to the wall.
Right, for us to go over the head of an architect that came in for just the only architectural review you'd had at that point, I just, I'm not comfortable.
Well, it should have been done all along, I mean, I, you know, I mean, the fact that it wasn't done in the past doesn't mean it's not a good idea.
No, I'm not saying it's not, but it's like, it's the only one that got an architecture review.
Well, it's a big, it's a big building.
Yeah, no, I understand, but, and, so, I just.
Yeah, I mean, if we already have an architect on board, and we don't have to send it back, I, I mean, I would have been fine with the guy that originally looked at it, but it's easier to just have this guy look at it. And I, I do have faith in him, if he is, well, if he was recommended by Dwayne, I, I would hope that, you know, he understands what we're trying to accomplish here in the village.
If, just Dave, if JP was assigned village architect with this project, does that have a sunset? Or is he still that on this project? And how does that work? Because the village board did appoint him as village architect for this project review.
I, I mean, I think the village architect now is Robert Orr, he was, he was appointed, so. I mean, if you wanna, we can certainly clarify that the next board meeting, maybe we will, but I, I don't, I don't think the board views that there's any other architect.
Okay, well, just whatever gets the trust.
Listen, that's a good point, and I think the board ought to clean that up, if that's, if there's an issue with, with that, so.
No matter who reviews it, we can ask that they comment on sort of an A to B comparison with what was approved, and then also with, with these material changes.
Yeah, I would respectfully request, it's just very limited in review somewhat.
If he has comments beyond that, that were kind of covered already, we can shoot, we kind of decide which, what's most relevant.
Yes, I'd appreciate that very much.
He look at the A to B comparison for what's being changed.
Correct, and you don't have to do what he says, I mean, it's still your decision, so it's just, it's a, it's a, you know, so, not by any.
Yeah, I, I think this is just, what do you guys think of the changes, just offhand?
Oh, it looks good.
I mean, I appreciate you coming back to.
I'm glad he's coming before us, before he puts the building up, and starts putting this stuff on, then coming in and asking. You know, like you said, an architectural review, this, this is what we need, it's gotta be done before we start these buildings. It says it was done once already, probably clarifying this, and getting the changes in that you like, Rob.
When was the first one done, the first review?
Two thousand and eighteen.
This is where we gotta stop, just so we don't have odd-looking stuff in the village anymore.
I think it would be appropriate, if you're gonna refer this for an architectural review, that you provide to the, to Robert Orr, the documentation from the village file on the earlier review. So he has something to compare apples to apples, or apples.
Sure, yeah, that, that's a very good point.
Yeah. I agree.
He might say it's fine, let it go, and he may not, you know.
Yeah, because I went all around with the brick color, we had to put mockups on its stuff with the brick color that was finally approved, so. You know, there was this process that we went through with that, so I just don't want Mr. Orr, not saying he would or wouldn't, to say, oh, I don't like the brick color. I mean, we've.
Right, right, there's context behind why, why this, why this.
I don't want to see us getting into a problem that we got at the end of the street, that's what I'm saying, I like to do this now, before we get started.
So how do we get information to Mr. Orr?
I would just provide it to, to her, you know.
So we can put a package together to the board, I guess, and you can send it to Mr. Orr.
Sure, that's, if you want to put that package together, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, just whatever helps expedite the issue, that's fine.
And include some pictures of the plaza?
Yeah.
So he's, maybe he doesn't have to drive up here and see.
Correct.
Does that have to be a form of a motion or anything like that, and voted on, or are we all?
Yes.
I make a motion that we have the village architect, Robert Orr, be the architect over on this project at this point, changes.
I second it.
On favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'd see you coming back, Kurt, but I don't want to see us getting into a hassle, let's get it straight now, before we get started.
Yeah, just, yeah, just as, we can just put it to bed and move on, that'd be great. All set?
All right, yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
The hearing hopefully from Mr. Orr shortly.
Okay.
Dave, what, I just wanna familiarize myself with it, it's two thousand and nine, that's the one, okay.
Local law number one.
I make the motion to adjourn.
If that was Karen's last question, I guess.
Oh, that's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's all right, all good.
Yeah, you second that, Lou?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Well, this is a big move. But I don't want to see you.